The Chippewa County Board of Commissioners regular meeting, July 13th, 2023 at 4:30. Pardon your lateness, Mr. Trainer, sir.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Here.
Commissioner Savoy.
Here.
Commissioner Shackleton.
Here.
Commissioner Trainer.
Here.
And Chairman Martin.
Here. Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
I move the agenda as presented.
Support.
Any discussions about the agenda? None? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both? Motion passes. Approval of county board minutes, we're going to put these together, the work session, the public hearing, the regular board. Put all those minutes together. So moved. Or motion support and discussion, sir.
There are just a couple of typos at the end of the regular board meeting. They're rather obvious, and you could just kind of clean that up, please. It was in the discussion, I believe. At least there was this morning when I read the minutes online. I'm going to find the page.
The comments are on page 15 from that regular meeting.
Is this, okay, that one's for. That was for the last page.
Right, that's what you're approving right now.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was looking at. Oh, it must have been finance. Okay, it was finance being the one we just had.
We can copy that.
Yeah, Bob will talk about those later.
Okay, good. Again, no big deal. I was reading the minutes this morning, a couple minor mistakes jumped out at me, and I thought it's not a big deal, it should just be fixed. And I'll try to find it. So, sorry, wasted your time on that.
Next, we have, did we ever vote on that?
No.
Okay. Motion support and more discussion except the three sets of minutes as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion passes. Correspondence and clerk's office, if you've cruised those, there's over a dozen. It's been a very busy month.
I'm will be accepted.
Accept and forward the correspondence as necessary?
Good support.
Did you, okay, thank you. Any discussion about those? A lot of matches had to do with the septic. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both? Motion passes. Public comments, number seven, rules are three minutes per person, 15 minutes per subject. And come up and speak into whenever there's a red light on. Okay.
Good evening, Kevin Kelchik, President, My Michigan Medical Center, Sue. Just wanted to come before you guys again tonight. Important vote tonight, and I just want to, again, thank each and every one of you, regardless of what your position or opinion is on this. I appreciate the time and that you've put into this. I, of course, believe with every ounce of my being that this is the best for healthcare in Chippewa County. I brought a few people here, may not speak, but I wanted to let you know that Tom Coats, our board chair, supports us. Dr. Ralph Duman supports us. Dr. Paul Rechner supports us. And I also wanted to bring up tonight, somebody that, because I've kept corporate involved and informed throughout this whole period, and I apologize if I didn't bring somebody up here to speak in front of you in the past, but I want to thank Mike Rose, our corporate CFO, for coming up here. And Mike, would you like to speak it off?
Sure.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mike Rose. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for My Michigan Health. I just want to say we're thrilled to have War Memorial Hospital join our system. We're now 18 months into it, and I think we're already achieving some mutually beneficial synergies. Thank you for your consideration of this transaction. We look forward to making significant capital investments in this community, and this transaction helps pave the way for that. So, thanks again for your consideration.
Anyone else? Brian, is there anybody up there? Public comment?
I don't see anyone in Zoom land.
Last chance, once. Yes, please come on.
Hi, my name's Colleen Myatt, and I'm just here to, I wanted to make a complaint regarding the health department. I just lost my father recently, and I utilize the hospice house, so it's kind of like not understanding. They're both two entities, so I don't want to cross the paths of who did what and what, because I don't really know. But there were just a lot of errors that were made, and when somebody is passing, you know, you're told that, you know, oh, you know, go to the hospice house, it'll be peaceful, they'll help you out, this and that, and your health department. And I just had nothing but stressful event. And I was there the whole time. My, my mother, my daughter, my husband was very helpful. So we had issues with medications, medications being stopped, then brought back on board. And so I wanted to say that in my, I want it investigated, July 5th, July 60th passed, his last 11 hours and everything that took place. And I can't turn it back, and I have to live with that and move forward. So, if you could look into the matter, that I'd appreciate it. I have talked with the supervisors, they have said that they're looking into it, but I want it, I want it to be for sure dealt with.
Generally, at the end of the meeting, there are extra comments.
I done? Thank you.
Again. I charged you this morning on my mouth, so if I'm garbled, I flunk. Resting is moving. Anymore? Once, going twice? Oh, count, close. Administrator's report, Administrator Church.
Just the regular reports on there. We are missing a couple because the deadline was a little bit early and then with the holiday in there, so we do have a couple of catch-ups next month for the animal, you know, animal controls in there. But there will be a couple of catch-ups. I'm not sure. Oh, Veterans Affairs, and we'll get that caught up next month.
Any questions for Administrator John? New business, resolution 2023-13 on services for the elderly. This be roll call vote.
I would move passage of it.
Support. Motion support and any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Non-quiet.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Aye.
Commissioner Savoy.
Yes.
Commissioner Shackleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer.
Yes.
Chairman Martin.
Yes. Next, we have a special tribute for Tammy Peyton, 23 years with the county. Page 28, as you can see, a very distinguished career here. And wish her nothing goes the best. We have a motion.
So moved. Support.
Any discussion?
Yes, she's been great to work with, and I'm such sheriff's department and as commissioner, if you called or fire called something, she always did follow up. She's very dedicated and very, very nice.
Anyone else? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Savoy.
Yes.
Commissioner Shackleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer.
Yes.
And Chairman Martin.
Yes. Next, Dr., tell me if I'm butchering this, is it Haines?
Haines.
33 years with us. Time.
So moved.
Motion.
Oh.
Support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Savoy.
Yes.
Commissioner Shackleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer.
Yes.
And Chairman Martin.
Yes. Next is resolution 2023-16 supporting rebuilding of Nunsk Creek Bridge on DNR, some wheelchair 47. Looking to move forward.
So moved. So moved.
Okay. Obviously, it's been an ongoing thing. I would put it right up there with parks being closed up here. This is our lifeblood. And we need this trail done, and.
I grow, I just have to say, this is, as you just mentioned about the parks being closed, I just drove by Bayview yesterday. You know, Bayview is one of the most popular parks, and it's, you know, by, what is it, Ranger Road out there, Big Pines, and it's all locked up, padlocks. It's just, it's just crazy.
But anyway, I can't mix all the dangerous trees you want.
Yeah, exactly. Anyway, I'm sorry.
No, I totally agree, absolutely. I mean, this is, one's a summer issue, this is a winter issue, but it's all tourism, and it's all our lifeblood. And sending. I'll get off my box. Any more comments? Oh, I'm sorry, not all those in favor. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Savoy.
Yes.
Commissioner Shackleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer.
Yes.
And Chairman Martin.
Yes. Next, we have resolution E, 2023-17, approval of transfer of hospital facilities to My Michigan Medical Center. To me, commitments and promises of My Michigan Health and Special Covenant D.
To get it to the discussion, I'll make that motion.
I'll support, support, motion and support. Discuss.
Well, we've been working on this for quite a while, and when we, when we gave My Michigan an extension, what's that, a year, year and a half ago? We knew that someday that they would probably approach us and want to purchase the hospital. I think it's to the benefit of the community, improve our healthcare services. And throughout these negotiations, they've been very, very good to work with. I had requested a 30-day delay on this vote. And that delay was essentially to take sort of like the purpose of a public hearing. We didn't want a public hearing, but in 30 days, I have had not one, not one person contact me that's against it or for. Commissioner Trainer and I, I said the other night, attended the Michigan Township Association, and there was a majority of the 15 townships in this county that attended that. There's no opposition as long as we sold it at or near market value. So that 30 days is up today, and I'd like to move forward.
Yes, Commissioner Shackleton.
I was chairman of the hospital board for many years, and during that time, the hospital investigated whether they should stay independent or find a partner to go forward with. We took, as a board and the administration, several years, I mean, from when we first talked about it to when we finally actually did it, I think it was probably about eight years, and we spent a lot of time investigating what would give us the best likely healthcare for the future for our community. We came to the conclusion that we needed a strong partner, and we interviewed and investigated several potential partners. We found My Michigan to be the closest to the type of culture, the type of approach to the community that they were already doing in all the other communities as, as we do here. They pledged to invest, I believe, off the top of my head, around $60 million in capital improvements. In any other community that they did work with, they, they made pledges as well, and they always followed through. In West Branch, they reopened the maternity operation there after it had been closed for many years, because that's what the community wanted. There's not a lot of money in delivering babies. It's not a profitable venture, but obviously, it's a very important service to a community. And they reopened it, and it's operating today. My interest in this is, of course, the same, the best likelihood of future healthcare, the best healthcare for our community. My Michigan wants to invest a lot of money in the campus at War Memorial Site, and for them to best be able to do that and to make those decisions and freely invest, they want to own the buildings that they are investing in. I think just about anybody can understand that. If you were renting a house, you wouldn't want to spend a lot of money renovating that house when you don't own it. They, so it makes sense, it gives them a free hand in order to make those investments and expand and increase the quality of the services in our community. I'm just, I'm very confident that this is, to me, I've always said, there just is, it makes no sense to me why we wouldn't do this. The value in, in the county to keep basically the old building there, as opposed to trying to free up the hand of My Michigan to invest, just doesn't make, it makes no sense to me. There's no value to the county in keeping it. In fact, I think there's a negative value to us keeping it. We have a liability of an old building that, that in fact, the one appraisal said it's worthless if you keep it, because you basically are keeping an old building. So it just makes sense. It's the best thing for our community for the long run. We don't own the hospital. The hospital was spun off as an independent 501(c)(3) corporation like 40 years ago. It's been independent all that time. Right now, we're nothing more than a landlord. We own some part of the campus, and it doesn't make sense for us to continue it. They're going to give us more than a fair price. We've got two appraisals. One says it's worth nothing. The other person says it's worth a million and a half. They're going to give us 2 million. I think we're doing pretty good. And that 2 million is going to go towards the retirement obligation that we already have on the books to healthcare providers that will work for Chippewa County through the health department. So, again, I only interested in healthcare in our community and what we can do to help provide the best healthcare. And I think us following through this transaction, to me, is clearly the right course of action. So, sorry for the length of it, but.
You're fine.
Can I say something else? One thing I wanted to find out is if My Michigan follows through with what they promised. And I went to work, I went down to Alpena, it was the only hospital I could find that was county-owned and transferred to My Michigan. Then I started with the county in Alpena, started with the administrator, she gave me connections, and I started working my way down the list that she gave me. And the administrator is Mary Catherine Hannah, and the main guy she sent me to was Bob Adrian. He was the chairman of the board when they sold the hospital to My Michigan. And about the only thing I can say is My Michigan has upheld everything they've promised them, and that's all I could find out of them. So I see no problem at all standing behind them. Hopefully, they'll stand behind us and do what's best for the citizens of Chippewa County.
I, I came in, it's the 11th hour, all the groundwork had been done already, but I have a, I have a basic philosophy, the government should own as little land as possible, and, you know, we should divest ourselves in it as soon as it's not beneficial to the community. I look at it as a neutral position. Owning the same land that we have, you know, isn't going to continue, isn't going to help us anymore, you know, isn't going to, isn't going to fix any more broken arms, it isn't going to, you know, do any more surgeries for us. So, in that, you know, the price is fair, they negotiated in good faith, I feel very comfortable in going through with this sale.
I guess I am, I was fine with this, 100% on board, going all the way to 81. And then, if we need to walk backwards on that and say, you know, once you've done what you've promised to do, you can have it. I just. Just don't know. And the few calls I've gotten of late have been, generally speaking, told yourself they're going to take our hospital, and I know we don't own it, we own some of the land. I get it. I had a discussion with Dr. Watson, who was gracious enough, because I know she's obviously very, very busy, and, and basically, at the end, she doubled down on, I'm gonna, we'll show you how good we can be and be good for our community and how our culture is, is good and positive, and we'll take care of the community. And that's, that's where I'm at, is please, My Michigan, prove me wrong. Please, I want to be wrong, but based on the people I've talked to and the promises I made. And, you know, the point is, is quite possibly moot, but that's, that's where I ended up in the end, is actions speak louder than words, even legal documents. And, and yes, My Michigan has definitely shown a willingness. I just want to make sure they follow up as best, and I just hope I'm wrong. I want everything that you four have said and you all have said to have it, and then you can label me the doubting Thomas. That's my two bits. Yes, sir.
Yes, I'd like to add that we had asked for two appraisals, and the one appraisal that was zero was based on when the lease expires in 2068, I believe, if we did nothing with the buildings, that's why it's worth zero. There being, what are we going to do with it? As far as giving it to them at 2068, the biggest issue I heard in last year, year and a half is we're giving away the hospital. So we asked for two appraisals. One is fair market value. Commissioner Shackleton said that that's 1.5 million, we negotiated 2,000, 2 million, so that defeats, we're giving away the hospital, we're actually selling it for more than what today's market value is. I don't know what Plan B would be, but if we're going, when, before we vote on this, it's required that I read the motion since I made it into, it's quite lengthy, so bear with me.
Yeah.
More discussion.
I just, when, when you said about the lengthy, I'm talking this page?
Yeah.
Okay, you're not talking the, yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, motion to approve transaction with My Michigan, July 13th, 2023. Commissioner Savoy moved second by Commissioner Lawrence to approve the following resolution, 2023-17, approving the transfer and sale of hospital facilities to My Michigan Medical Center, Sue, with continuing commitments and promises of My Michigan Health, subject to the following agreement of purchase and sale, joint escrow instructions and continuing commitments and promises, which provides the terms of sale of county-owned hospital facilities to My Michigan Health and My Michigan Medical Center, Sue, will be amended to prevent the county of Chippewa to review the title report commitment prior to closing. And if the county determines in its discretion that the condition of the title is such that county would be exposed to unreasonable liability, the sale is closed. The county may give written notice to My Michigan Health, My Michigan Sue, that the county were closed to sell, only if My Michigan Sue agrees to waive that adverse condition of title, and My Michigan Health commits to fully assume the liability determined by the county to exist. And such action by the county shall not be considered to be a breach under this agreement. And the Chair of Chippewa County Board of Commissioners is authorized to execute the agreement as amended on behalf of Chippewa County, and the Chippewa County Administrator is authorized to proceed with closing with My Michigan Sue and My Michigan Health, according to the terms of the agreement as amended. And also, the Chair of Chippewa County Board of Commissioners are in the alternative by Chippewa County Clerk, Chippewa County Administrator, are authorized to execute the closing documentation prepared in accordance with the approved amendment as amended to facilitate mutual interests expressed by the agreement of purchase and sale of the continuation of indigent care to Chippewa County residents and visitors. The Chippewa County Administrator is authorized to execute the appropriate agreement of My Michigan Medical Center, Sue, continue the existing indigent care services with My Michigan Medical Center, Sue, to ensure that the facility meets all applicable local, state, federal laws and regulations with no obligations.
Oh, he's read that.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Aye.
Commissioner Savoy.
Yes.
Commissioner Shackleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer.
Yes.
Chairman Martin.
No. Next standing, we report.
Regular meeting of Chippewa County Board of Commissioners Finance Claims and Accounts Committee was held on Tuesday, July eleventh, twenty twenty three. At Chippewa County Courthouse, citizen parade. Chairman Savoy called the meeting in order at four thirty P M. A quorum was present. Approval of the agenda moved by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Trainer to approve the agenda. As presented on a voice vote motion carried out with some. Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Motion passes.
Probably comment. We had several people speak, our correspondence and information items, no action necessary. We then moved into the agenda items. First was Health Department Agreement for General and Patient Care. It was moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Shackleton to approve the agreement of the general and patient care. For hospice patients between agency, Chippewa County Health Department, E U T Home Health Hospice. And my Michigan Medical Center Sue as the provider as presented to reflect my Michigan Health on voice vote motion carried out with some.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Motion passes.
Health Department Albert Heating and Cooling quote for H C unit. And with the Cloverland rebate moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Trainer. To approve and authorize a quote from Albert Heating and Cooling to replace the unit. And the Information Technology Office as presented on voice vote motion carried out with some.
For. Motion and support for. Your commission. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Motion passes.
Veterans Affairs. It was moved by Commissioner Marks, supported by Commissioner Shackleton to prove and authorize F Y twenty four County Veteran Service. Fund Grant, seeking fifty thousand dollars for Chippewa County Veteran Services on voice vote motion carried out with some.
Support.
Motion in support for Veteran Affairs Service Fund Grant. Any discussion? All those there?
Aye.
Both. Motion passes.
Childcare Fund Probate Court moved by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Trainer. To accept and authorize amended county childcare budget summary as presented on voice vote motion carried out with some.
Support.
Motion in support for childcare fund. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Motion passes.
Ninety first District Court Treatment Court Coordinator. Mental Health Corps moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Martin to accept the change of the ninety first District Court Treatment Court Coordinator. Executed July first, twenty twenty three on voice vote motion carried out with some move.
Support.
Motion in support for ninety first District Court. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Motion passes.
Next was Central Dispatch Update General Orders moved by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Martin. To approve the amended general order six ninety six dash nine eighty eight calls, no health calls as presented on the voice vote motion carried out with some.
Support.
Motion in support of dispatch. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Motion passes.
Office of Emergency Services. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Martin to approve Office of Emergency Services. Fund two eleven funding to sponsor ten attendees for medical first responder course as presented on voice vote motion carried out with some.
Support.
Motion and support. Oh, yes. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Motion passes.
Office of Emergency Services F Y twenty twenty two dash twenty three hazardous materials emergency preparedness. Moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Lawrence to approve and accept the F Y twenty twenty two dash twenty twenty three hazardous material. Emergency preparedness grant and to authorize necessary documents on voice vote motion carried out with some.
Support.
Let's see, it's for any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Motion passes.
Sheriff's Department Stone Garden Purchases. Moved by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Trainer to authorize utilizing Stone Garden funding. To purchase additional license plate reader systems to be installed at the ferry docks on the voice vote motion carried out with some.
Forward.
Motion in support of Stone Garden purchases. Does that come out of our general fund? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Motion passes.
Administration and moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Martin acknowledged. And accept the program income certification from seven one twenty twenty two to six thirty twenty twenty three. And the single audit certification on voice vote motion carried out with some move.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Motion passes.
Administration Training and Travel Request moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Trainer to approve administration travel. To Escanaba for M M R A. Offered training on October twenty 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 three. For. Our administrator church on a voice vote motion carried out with some move.
Support.
Motion and support for training and travel, M M R A. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Motion passes.
Administration USDA Forest Service moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Lawrence to approve and authorize. The SCIR rule school election to remain the same at eighty percent Title One, thirteen percent Title Two, and seven percent Title Three. For state payments on voice vote motion carried out with some.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Motion passes.
Finance Claims and Accounts for June for the county and health department moved by Commissioner Martin, supported by Commissioner Shackleton. To recommend approval of the June county bills and payroll, general claims, other fund claims, payroll and health department claims and payroll. On the voice vote motion carried out with some.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Motion passes.
Committee and Chairman Comments. There are several commissioners fault. I did speak under Chairman Comments about my Michigan. Resolution. Meeting moved by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Lawrence to adjourn the meeting at four fifty three P M. And I move for the acceptance and distribution of this report as presented.
Support.
Support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Motion passes. Uh, finish your board on meetings. Or if. Anybody have anything they could give Tuesday? No, then I would. I guess.
Just for the lady who spoke about her dad passing, I, I think, you know, we all. Feel for you and want to express our condolences. Tough time. Most of us have been through it. I just had a family member lose a, a very close family member. And I was kind of experienced that recently as well. So it's. I know Karen Sankis, who is head of the Health Department, I understand she's looking into your concerns. She's a good lady. And there's good people in hospice, but I, I'm sure your concerns are legitimate and need to be valued and, and looked at. But really, our heart goes out to you. Sorry for the passing of your dad.
Have you been in touch with Mrs. Holt? Hospice?
You asking me?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, I have. I'll be attending her board meeting.
Mrs. Sankis, you're looking into this whole? Does. If we can be of service.
Yeah, I'd like to add too, sorry for what you went through. I know I've had. Five family members, including my wife, hospice. And it's a very struggling, emotional time and my heart goes out to you. As far as I just want to point out, as far as medications. Be stopped or restarted, stuff medications are regulated by physicians even, even at hospitals. You know, we, we don't really, really have any oversight on that part of it. But hopefully you, you get some closure to this.
Can I make a comment? I, I appreciate what you're saying. And I do know that the doctors have the control. But. The nurse did not, would not call the doctor. So. Like I said, it just goes deeper than that. I do, I appreciate. It's hard to lose a loved one. I just. Really wouldn't want anybody else to go through. In. What I, what I experienced. And I know we don't have a control of what each individual person goes through. When it's their time. I, I do understand that. We do appreciate that. You're making comment and looking into it. Thank you.
For the discussion.
Again, one little thing, yeah, is on my Michigan. I'd like to thank Dr. Watson and Brandon Cross for calling me and letting me know what was going on and at least they showed their concerns. And that helped me in the end make up my mind to what I had done. And I hope you guys all hold up to your end and help the citizens of Chippewa County. For me, ma. Please, yes. Prove you, ma. For me, ma.
Motion in your chair?
I'll make that motion.
Support. Motion in your, motion in your, meeting in your.